Yeah, and it's indicating. Anyway. Welcome to the Public Hospital District. One of our commissioners' regular meeting. My name is Matt Oliphant. I'm sitting in tonight for Erica Libino, who is under the weather, but is joining us by Zoom. Her voice does not sound so good, so she's passed along some comments from me to make the meeting, but she'll indicate her votes on things with a thumbs up in the chat box. She can talk if necessary, but she doesn't want to subject us to her voice tonight. So anyway, that's why she might be a little quieter than usual.
And if she votes no, what symbol will she use?
Thumbs down, just like the emperor. So I need to make a couple of quick changes to the agenda. First one, under old business, Erica thought it might be valuable for us to talk a little about coffee with the commissioner and sort of what format that might take moving on. And under future meetings, we should probably add the meeting with Hospital District Two that's coming up next week. That's on the 28th, I believe, from 2 to 6. So it would be nice to include that in the agenda. Also, Scott Olander would like to have added to the finance part. The 501(c)(3) recognition. Do you want to say anything about this now?
This is a consideration for becoming a dual organization, both a public hospital and a 501(c)(3) non-performing organization also.
Okay. So please add that to the finance. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. So then with those changes, do I have the motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended. And I second to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Terry. So we're just approving the amended agenda. So all those in favor of the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And get some guys a thumbs up over this. Okay.
It feels as if I had to say aye.
Okay, so consent agenda.
I'm motioning to approve the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Terry. Second? Erica's going to be awfully quiet tonight. Bob, you want to take this one?
Yeah, I'll take it.
All right. Second by Bob. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, thank you. All right, time for public comments and announcements. Remember, if you have a public comment or announcement, please keep it to about three minutes, and at the beginning, state your name and address. And one reminder, we don't respond to public comments immediately at the public meeting. Is there anybody here who would like to make a comment or an announcement? Anybody in Zoom who would like to make a comment or announcement? Okay. If no one, then we'll move on to presentations. The first one is from Scott Olander, the CFO, who wants to talk about the KVH expansion project.
Yes, on pages, beginning on page 11, there is a presentation regarding borrowing of long-term debt or related to the expansion project. And the Financial Sustainability Committee and the Finance Committee, over the past five or six months, has looked at a number of different financing options for the expansion project. There was a consideration of issuing public issue of tax exempt bonds, private placement with funds from banks, a USDA loan, and also an FJ loan. And also, there was discussion regarding financing the project with existing cash reserves that the organization has. And after there, we've come to the point, or the Finance Committee has come to the point, that we believe a private placement of tax exempt bonds is probably the preferred option to finance its expansion. We think that the... We should finance it. We should not try to use existing funds. We want to, part of our goal was of financial sustainability for the organization, is to maintain a positive operating margin and strong cash reserves. We would have a very strong balance sheet. The staff reserves would be thinner than we would like them to be if we were not to finance this expansion. And so the, we have, the presentation is by Piper Sandler. And on page 12, or page 12 of the presentation, there is a graph of KVH's existing debt structure. We have a total debt of about $18 million. And this, you can see a maximum annual debt service. It's currently at $1.6 million in 2022 and through 2026. And then it goes, it drops. And we looked at three different, we got to the point with three different options. A 20-year loan, a 15-year loan, and a 10-year loan, and that these would amortize over the respective periods. When we have financed debt in the past, we have front-loaded it to be a lot of interest only upfront, and then the principal later in the debt. And this, we would, in these, we have these debt options where we would pay the principal and interest out over a level period. And so on, the committee's preferred option was a 15-year. We felt like that was the best scenario for the organization. And there's a 20-year and a 10-year. The, we will have Piper Sandler approve. They will go to the market and look at the options for 20, 15, and 10. And then we will come back here and make a decision to issue the debt. Later, we'll be having a final proposal from various banks. So, John, Bob, did I cover everything?
One thing we discussed is that from a timing perspective, to have it enter this business year would be preferable, is that correct?
Yes.
And we have kind of a ticking clock to make that happen. And so you'd be best to come out of this meeting with the desire of the board, so that if we're going to move forward, we start moving forward immediately. Is that accurate?
I think it would take about three months to close the deal.
One question I would have, it's just very small. There were some small corrections to the cost summary. And is, are we content with the 15 million as the target? Is there any reason to shift that up a million or two based on some of these cost adjustments over the last day or so? And maybe say that later in the meeting, I'm not sure, but it's just something I wanted your opinion on.
I would think we have a strong cash position.
There's no reason to move away from what we've been researching.
I did think about that, but I think 15 is the right one.
Okay.
And a couple of large pieces of equipment on the project side. We need to move from that construction cost of 13 something to 15 million. I think we have some large pieces of equipment to take over.
Yeah, so I would just say again, as Scott noted, we've had lots of discussions. We've asked a lot of questions. And it felt like everyone was pretty unanimous that the 15-year was the sweet spot of smaller annual payments. And yet, not spread out so long, the interest overall has really grossed to a certain amount. So with the 15-year, we're looking at about $5 million in total interest spread over the 15 years, and debt service of 1.3 million, added to the current debt service, of which, again, some of it starts to drop off in a few years. So based on our growth, based on some very conservative estimates, it was a safe way to approach with that service for this expansion. And Bob may have his own.
Yeah, I agree. A lot of money. A lot of work's been done. A lot of groundwork has been done to try to get what we want to be to a price possible. For support. Perhaps.
Yeah, that was good, John. I agree with your conversation there that the 15-year maturity is, looks like the best way to go with it.
And I think, to be honest, this is still gestimates.
These are, you know, educated gestimates.
And this is the next step, and they go out and come back with harder numbers?
Then we go out to the market and come back with it.
And the goal would be before the end of this year, to see those final numbers and do an actual vote to commit to that process.
If the board approves taking action, we would sign a commitment letter with Piper Sandler. And we'd sign, June, sign that tomorrow. We would send that, and then they would get to work about finding out.
And if I understood correctly, we essentially negotiated that if at some point we sign off on this, they do the work, but then for whatever reason, we don't actually commit to going to the bonds, we would owe them $60,000, but they would credit $30,000 back to us if the day ever came where we did move forward with this. Was that what you might say that correctly?
Yeah.
So we're essentially committing $60,000 today with a minimum, with a potential rebate of $30,000. And for some reason, we didn't move forward with this process. Because they're going to expend a fair amount of resources to begin really nailing this down.
Yeah, so if the governor raises the interest rate by another two quarters points, will it impact us much at all on the bond?
Jeff with Piper Sandler does not think so. He said, you know, the market anticipates that the Fed is going to raise the discount rate by that margin. So they're kind of, he would say they're kind of baked into the numbers already.
And he felt we're very desirable, you know, we have very good credit, good balance sheets that we can give the most favorable terms. Like Scott noted, people are aware of these increases, so it's kind of built into the system already.
On page 20 is the timeline. And what we're asking for this evening is to move to that second grade box called solicitation. So basically, with Jeff Feig and with his folks, they will take our financial statements, our project that we're talking about, and they will identify likely funders for this. And they will solicit proposals to finance this debt. So we're in that solicitation phase. We'll then give back those proposals. And again, we're looking for proposal for what would you charge us for 10-year, 15-year, and 20? Well, we're on all three, even though we're settling on 15-years. Hopefully, we'll get those from a number of private banks, and we'll look at the proposals that are made. On that, somewhere between comparison and pricing is when we will come back to the board and say, we need the authority to issue this debt. Because we'll get a really solid estimate of what the rates will be, but the actual price comes in very close to the day those bonds are issued. So right up until the day those debt funds are issued, we can pull back. As you said, we've committed some funds at that point. But we're at that solicitation point, then we will compare. We'll pick which bank we want to go with, and we'll say, ready, set, go. And they will say, okay, on the morning of October 31st, the price is 3.78%. And we will soon thereafter have $15 million in things. I would just point out that we're also financing the cost to issue the debt, which is about $310,000 in all. So the actual bonds will be under $15 million, $310,000. Am I accurate on that?
Right on. Yeah, I mean, there will be another vote, but obviously, if the numbers come in about what we expect, the assumption is that we're not doing this for no reason. If they are around those numbers, barring any rates, what rates or something.
Just give us a couple of answers. Something drastic changed in the world, you know, between now and then, this is a tough answer to.
Do we need a vote? Can I?
Yes, we do. We're looking for a motion authorizing administration to solicit proposals for the issuance of $15 million in bonds for pricing at terms of 10, 15, and 20-years.
John, would you like to?
I will move that statement.
Bob, being the other member of the Finance Committee, for a second. Okay, good.
I'm unsure if I'm on there because the heart of the community case, just want to make sure she had a window of opportunity. There's a few ways she wanted to.
I believe that.
The middle finger.
I believe that Erica talked with Julie about this and was supportive.
Yeah.
But Erica, if that's not true, speak now.
I feel comfortable with the discussion so far.
Okay, that was good.
Thank you, Erica, that's helpful. I don't see Erica on there at all.
Yeah.
She just flashed in there, she told you.
I know.
If they don't have their video cameras on, you will not see them. When they speak or when they type, you will see it on the side.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. You have a second, a motion from John, a second from Bob. Any further questions to here? All right, all those in favor of moving forward with this, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Erica's thumbs up.
There she is.
Good, thank you, Erica.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, Ron Erlocker, Facilities, wants to talk about the expansion project. Bid readiness. All right, you want to request authorization for financing for KVH expansion project? Is that?
That's that.
Yeah. So did you have anything to add to this conversation that you'd like to talk about?
What we're, what we're looking at is wanting to go to bid a little bit ahead of our DOH approval. So that process, we got started early last summer. And they ended up with a gentleman that was doing the review has left DOH. And so it got handed off to another gentleman who is now for a while. So it's kind of delayed us.
Okay.
But we have had some reviews with DOH. And we're, you know, probably 90% there, you know, with the review process. There's some detailed things that they could still catch. But by and large, the comments that they've made so far, we've been able to make those changes in the plans. And so it's really our opinion at this point. Yeah, thinking that it's a pretty low risk to go out to bid ahead of the actual approval of the road to construction.
Right.
And so, and even then, during the bidding process, if DOH come back with further comments, we can do an amendment, excuse me, an addendum to the bid documents and get those in the bid. So that is our plan. And the whole purpose for getting ahead of that is, remember, we really wanted to start this in, like, October. And so that's right real quick here. And the reason for that is, is, you know, we wanted to hedge our debt against the water table around here. So the lower the water table during the time when they're doing the foundations, the better. So trying to still hit that. However, in comparing to expansions that did this room right here, ED below, and surgery, in talking with that contractor, they, they said, you know, their real challenge is when they did the elevator pit, which is like another eight feet by the time you get to the bottom of the concrete. But they really hit water. And out in the parking lots or the storm sewers, they had to go down 14 feet there. And so the new design for storm sewers is they don't want you to go in the water table. They want you to be above it. They want that water to seep through the rocks and sand that are in the ground. And so deliberately don't clean the water table there. So it takes some of that risk out of there, but still, the more we get ahead of it, the better.
Okay, all right. Just one quick question. When you, the escalation, is that like inflation-related stuff?
It is inflation-related, yeah. And that's on top of each agency's.
Right.
Each agency's that are in there are just unforeseen things that happen or change orders that are order requested or for whatever reason. Those things that are, errors and emissions and contract documents, things like that.
Okay.
So that's their, their best guess. Where we are going to be.
Okay, so then, just, I want to make sure that everyone's aware of what you're doing tonight is you're talking to us about the timetable, giving us an update on costs, and talking about the DOH feedback and how we can handle that. If I write in a summary of what the points are, you'd like us to absorb?
Exactly. Yeah.
So I believe that the fact that the May Board actually authorized administration to take the actions necessary and to take the project to bid, so there's not an official action. Again, we just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we'll proceed to bid without the very final DOH.
It's always nice to have, have you sort of fill us in on this stuff line, because it's good to see how it works on the ground and how to proceed. So thank you. Something I do have. So you guys have any questions?
No, I want to thank him too, because you have so many projects to keep the hospital in a great cradle. So thank you so much.
We've been weekly for over a year or so. Feeling pretty good that we've had too many details.
Based on our discussion yesterday, it feels as though your recent discussions with Department of Health have alleviated some of the potential huge concerns of unknowns that, you know, maybe move a sink or do that. But you're feeling pretty good. It'd be very surprising to have any significant changes at this point, because you had some preliminary discussions with each subsection, is that?
Yes, that's correct. We've gone through the plans kind of page by page.
With the new representative of DOH?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there was a couple of things that he didn't agree with his partner there. But, so for an example, things that would be significant changes, like in PACU, we designed it to have five phases. There's three now, and it kind of made room for four, but we'll end it for five. That still doesn't meet the current code. And, but he's allowed us to do an assessment on that based off of our program, the way we operate here. And for that Phase 1, he just doesn't see that we need that sixth bit. That's what they're, they're ratioed, they like C6. So we did an assessment, and he gave me a verbal that, okay, yeah, we'll be fine with that based off of your assessment.
So it feels like you have a good rapport with them, and the information's transferred fairly efficiently in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, I felt good in the lengthy discussion we had yesterday, and the communication is strong. Things are being answered. We just need that final stamp of approval at some point. But if we delay to wait for that to begin the next step, things will get more expensive just because of water table mitigation or whatever else. Are we still thinking as soon as September 28th to try to put this out for bid? Or where do you stand on that?
About 24 hours. Well, we got in touch with the engineers this morning, and they said, eek, that's pushing us a little bit. And so we're back to October 4th now. And there's just, there's no value in going to market with ink and blade dock. Now, if we want to get in that time.
So you got that week back by chunking the bid period?
We did, yeah. So we had originally allotted five weeks for bidding, and we've now squashed that down to four weeks. Contacted, we contacted Paul, who's one of the bidders, we have a good relationship with, and said, what would that do to you? They said, no, that's a reasonable amount of time. So I'm comfortable with.
And I think if, like, well, that bid is open, if we got the DOH, we can do an amendment, like you said, to. Yeah. And then the bid prior to closing, which could alleviate some of our concern. The whole concern is change orders. People bid on it, it closes, you come to it, and then DOH says, you've got to do this. You have to issue a change order, and now the bid increases because of the change order. So that's balancing, actually trying to get as, push it through as efficiently as possible, minimize the risk of an unknown that we have to pay for at some point.
So you think that the Department of Health, before you have more change orders?
I would get it, no. I would expect some minor changes, that little things is going to catch up. I don't anticipate anything. I mean, if you thought there was going to be something big, we'd wait. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so.
And that's something, they've gone through it kind of verbally for the most part. That's why I think you all felt pretty good after yesterday's discussion, that although there could be a change, there's no reason to believe that's going to be a significant change because the first kind of round of discussions has taken place.
Sure.
They just have their, you know, it's government, they have their procedures to get through, where they finally issue the document or whatever it is that says, we're done making suggestions. So it's just a little bit of a risk both way. If you wait, construction gets more expensive.
Right.
If you go ahead, potentially DOH can say, oh, you've got to change this. But again, we've got an overlap of four or so, five weeks. Or if something came in, we could change before the bids close and say, oh, by the way, actually bid this, make an adjustment to your bid, so that we don't have a change order. I hope I'm explaining that clearly.
Yeah, yeah, you are. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Another good point, I think, from the meeting yesterday is the architects having socialized this project with a number of, where you would consider qualified bidders. And they think there's going to be some interest among the number of generals that do this kind of work in Spokane and Colorado.
Yeah.
More big, I was saying, kind of new.
Yeah. Any other questions?
And so Julie, you just kind of want to send to the board?
Yeah. I, you know, want to be transparent that that's where we're at. We think we're ready to go. And council wanted to be able to answer any board questions that we had on this.
I support moving forward as efficiently as we can.
Sounds good. Are there any concerns or any other questions that people have? Okay. Thank you, Ron. Okay, next up on the agenda is quality with Andy Olson. For Andy, sorry, I just wanted to mention that EFAC is getting up and running again, Patient Family Advisory Council. Right. And John and Erica are two representatives on that, on that committee.
I think Terry has took my place, my current on that. I don't believe I'm on that committee.
Terry, are you on that committee now?
Am I someone on that committee?
I'll have to check.
I know Erica's on the committee, so Erica.
We just have one person and Terry as the alternate, if needed.
All right, so Erica and then an alternate. Anyway, we can check it. But anyway, that's.
Who's the alternate?
Oh, you or John?
Yeah.
Or me or Bob?
We'll have to have an arm wrestling to see who the arm open it.
But anyway, so that committee is up and running again, or going to be up and running. And Erica just wanted me to mention that, because it's, I think, a valuable committee, and it'll be good to get some input on stuff from other community members. Anyways.
We do need more members, though. We've had two of the patient family advisors that, no, three that moved away. So if you know people that you think would be a good addition to the team, please let us know.
I'm not going to let you know anybody who might want to stay in town, because obviously, you're driving them.
Can you describe what an ideal candidate would be? What are you looking for?
We're looking for all kinds of patients or families. So someone who does use KVH for the healthcare, full upper floor county, people that want to park. People that want to partner with us to improve care, not people with a axe to grind or, or an agenda, but really who will want to help us figure out how to make patient experiences more patient centered.
Yeah.
I do have a job description for it if they become a volunteer. So there's a volunteer job description that goes with it.
Right. So it's to get to sort of feedback and input from people who are using KDH in various ways so that we can get outside perspective on them. So yeah, so if you guys think of anyone who would like, like to help improve the patient experience, please pass the names along to Manny. All right. Thanks, Manny. Go ahead and you're up.
Um, I just, one, I don't think we can highlight enough how proud we are that we are D and B accredited. So that's very, very exciting and can celebrate a lot to more than just talk about it.
If you mature as the only person who works here that was, remembers when we were last certified or, or credentialed by the life society.
I just, I really want to thank all the departments that were part of the survey and lots of people scrambled and worked really hard to get us compliant to it policies. That was a all organization effort and we are. So a lot of great work and I feel like really meaningful work too. I do want to add, I forget neglected to say thank you to pharmacy for their help with flu vaccines and COVID vaccines because we wouldn't have our flu vaccines or the new COVID vaccines without them. And then that's the other thing I just wanted to highlight is on the QI dashboard, on the first page of it. So I'm not sure what we said is in the packet. Um, the hospital card infections looks a little different than it did last month because we had attributed some of the hospital card infections to June when they were really July.
It's 29 of the.
The last month, June had said four, well, really three of those were actually in July. So we have already talked about three of those. The last one is a new surgical site infection that we found. It is not reportable to NHSM. And that was, I've got my patient stories in my board packet this time. So if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Well, hooray, D and B accreditation, that's great. So yeah, they, they accepted all our improvements. Great, great.
One of the differences is it's with D and B is it's not like, oh, yeah, we're done for three years and everybody forget about it. It's really ongoing. So we'll be communicating with them about our continued compliance. There's trainings coming up that we can participate in. They'll be back next year. So it just feels a lot more collaborative. I mean, they even sent us an email with like balloons that was like, congratulations, one year accreditation. It just feels very different. Yeah.
So it lasts for three years. What happens is three years comes to an end and we go through the process again or once?
The way that they do it is that at the end of the three years, need to be able to be certified or compliant with their ISO 9001, which is their quality management system. I don't really know of anyone that doesn't make it. I don't think they like kick you out. They just help you with what you need to do to get compliant with it. And so that's what they're doing over these next two years too. And even though they don't have to survey us, they're coming to help us be prepared for that certification or compliance.
Right.
Can you remind us, you have some assignments coming in the next couple of months at the board with regards to QUAPY?
Oh, yeah.
Can you just remind them what to expect and what?
So next Friday, the leaders in the organization will be getting together to share with each other kind of a review of our services, which we're required to do annually by conditions of participation, and to look at our performance to this year's QUAPY plans, improvement plans, and draft what we would like to propose as our QUAPY plans for 2023. Our draft then goes to Julie and admin team, but then to QI council on October 10th. Then they'll be disseminated to you also that you can review them and give us feedback. And at the December QI council, we'll have those final drafts brought forward as well as recommendations for what goes to the board each month in the QI dashboard. And then that will come to the December board meeting for final approval. So we're, yeah, taking it off.
December board meeting is going to be in the first week of January.
So we're, yeah, so we're going to put you to work the last three months of the year helping with the development of that QUAPY plan. And a real focus this year, as there has been in the last couple of years, continuing to make sure the QUAPY plan and the strategic plan are all pulling together.
Great.
Yeah, I love this process. I mean, it's, you get to see how effective the strategic plan is and impacting people's sort of days of work. And, and how, and you get an appreciation of all the work they go through.
And the last couple of years of the review of the QUAPY plan have been very good because they have been doing a very good job of meeting their expectations on their QUAPY plan. So I expect this is going to be another really good year for it because having them work out the QUAPY plan, it, it has done a very good job of increasing our quality in, in our healthcare.
Do you have anything to add to the QUAPY plan?
Just, I am really excited, right? We have our beautiful strategic plans and that is, we have always incorporated it, but it feels like even more focused this year. I'm really excited to look at strategy alongside QUAPY. I think it's going to be really cohesive. I'm, I'm excited about it. I've already heard some of the ideas people have for new QUAPYs for this year that just really, I think do love our strategy. So I think it's really exciting.
Great, great, wonderful. Any questions or comments for Manny or about the dashboard specifically? Anything about the report? Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up, CEO Julie Fies.
I was just reading my own CEO report and trying to remind myself, I was talking to people. But not exactly concise. So I do have a couple of things I'd like to add. Really, really good news. Right now we have three folks, Dr. Martin, Catherine Brunner, and Michelle Worrell back at the Family Medicine Conference in Washington DC doing some recruiting. And Michelle and her team have, have put together some great banners and videos and graphics and they're getting a lot of attention at this family medicine conference. She, I, I will read this, I will be brief there. She said, "We came to this event not sure what to expect in terms of recruiting. At the end of day two, we have secured seven to 10 great underscore candidate possibilities." And Catherine will be following up when she returns to Ellensburg. If we can land any one of these candidates, this will be a huge success. The graphics were great, three people at the conference are key. She said, "Mass, mass, mass." People want to know where Ellensburg is and, and, you know, knowing how far we got from Seattle and everything. That's something you didn't have before. And the, the team has just been fabulous. So they are all feeling really, really excited about this conference and their possibility to successfully recruit someone. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Amanda has it in her reports, but this is really exciting. We had identified the need, we talked at the board retreat in Sherran about the desire to really reboot the teen steps process here as a way to sort of re-reach out to, to the staff about our culture of safety. We had hoped to get maybe five or six people through master's training for teen steps. And Amanda was able to identify a team to do the master's training at the University of Washington. We will be hosting that at some KDA. And because of that, we're going to be able to train about 30 KDH employees instead. So it is, I, I think it is really, really exciting. We won't have people flying to Atlanta and Salt Lake City. Instead, our folks will be together and very concentrated and focused. So we're sending them away. We want them to have that house experience and that networking, but we're going to be able to be a lot further people. So anything else she?
Yeah, we're really excited about that and then we'll be working with the team. I think thanks to Manny, she's going to be a part of this as well. And we'll be working on curriculum design with folks that now, once they get the master training tools, what does it look like for KDH based on the back run? The board is a victory for what our training plan will be for 2023. So very exciting.
And the last thing I'll mention is that I did just send out a very chatty, long email with construction updates. And hopefully it'll create some conversation for commissioners with QUAPY, with commissioners. Talk about benefits, open enrollments coming up very soon. And Amanda's going to be doing a benefits fair again here, like we used to do back pre-COVID. So vendors will be here and people have their questions answered in depth, but also really highlighting some of the early moves that we've made in benefits and in wellness to sort of engage people and engage staff in that employer choice conversation going into the year. It is a long, chatty email, but hopefully like I said, we'll get people talking.
Yeah, I got to read the email today. It was a very good email, even though it was really long, it was a long novel, but it didn't make me fall asleep. It was very good, Julie. Thank you.
You're welcome. I like, I think it's bullish, so that's why I always drive. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Amanda, could you say just a couple of words about us? Just to, so the rest of the board can hear about what's going on with values alignment?
Oh, yes, definitely. So next week, we actually have, we've wrapped, first of all, say we've wrapped up for our work for this year on primary care. So that has all been finalized, great conversations there and there's some updates. We started specialty care and emergency department conversations this summer. We are having a specialty care meeting on Tuesday. And so a lot of that conversation is about call. That's, that's the real hot topic with specialty care providers. And we know that that really varies between each specialty. So we really look forward to talking about that. How do we get the right data to be able to meet and work with those different groups and what their different needs are? The emergency department, we had, at the first meeting, we had two providers. They're both PAs. They were highly engaged. They were folks that already were really highly engaged with us. And the next meeting that we had set up, we did not, when we went to go prep the agenda and topics, we did not have any acceptance from the providers. This is a particularly hard group to schedule. But with the emergency department, this is the feedback we get, you know, they have their shifts among 10 to 13 typically, but when they're not here, sometimes they don't live here and they're, they're off, you know, doing other things in their chunks of time. And so I know providers were, were trying to make that work, but we just didn't have the attendees that we're hoping for. And so we actually sent an email out to canceling emergency department group. We've already had conversations this week with the two providers that are aged and values aligned. We have some really great ideas. We think we're going to have some really good progress and certifications in some of those meetings. But I will, we'll continue to keep the board informed of some of that work through that context. But the actual logistics of scheduling those meetings with that group were quite challenging. So Julie, did I miss anything?
No, I don't, I, I don't think so. The physicians, again, they, they come in, they work their shifts and many of them have work in other hospitals. So getting them in a room together and, and again, values alignment is something you have to dedicate time and conversation to. So it's not something we do on the fly. It's not something we want to do under the gun. So I'm really pleased the, the PAs and APCs that support the physicians and the emergency department, I think are, are very well engaged and, and have that conversation, even though we're not meeting in values alignment of instruction.
But Bob and I are the board representatives on that committee. So go ahead. So we are, so the board is. The only other question I had was just an update, like I, I know that we talked about a recognition event on the 3rd of December. Is that still, it works?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I know Michelle might be on the line as well.
She had to leave, I think, for.
So we are going to engage the recognition committee on that work. So the date has been set, the, the location has been set. The recognition committee will help with some of those logistics. But when Michelle gets back, she's going to be engaging more of a specific group of people on, working on communication. I also understand she worked with some central students to partner on some of the communications work around the event. So I think it's in progress, but we don't have a lot of examples yet.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure that we're still on track because I know that for a lot of people, that's a really nice event and we've kind of missed it. So it'd be good to have it back.
Andy, questions on that? Our turnover percentage, better than last year, but still pretty high.
Yeah. Last year, remember we had the accommodation, you know, in October that year, we had some high amounts for 2021 we did with accommodations. We didn't, we did not, just to clarify that, we did not issue any separation of employment with those employees, but we did have some resignations based on the healthcare accommodations. But it is still high and it's something, again, the employer choice work is, is so important. And we're really excited about that. We've had some really great conversations to prepare for negotiations with WSMA as well. And we had some successful things with teen stars. But it's from what I hear in HR collaborative around the state, I'm highly involved in that. And it's not uncommon, but still a problem for us. It's higher than we wanted to be, but thanks for.
On the exit interview.
Yeah.
One, like, has it traditionally been more medical assistance and reception that's still? And exit interviews or certain trends that you're finding?
You know, we have seen more RN turnover than we haven't in historical years. Relocations, we've had, there's not really necessarily one huge theme. I would say there's a variety of.
Early retirements, stuff like that.
Resignments, some people just, you know, there is the burnout competition. So people are just choosing, you know, if they want to.
Stroke alert ER room one, stroke alert ER room one.
Childcare is a challenge within our. People were really wrestling with, what do I do? You know, and your personal life, you still see that. But what we have changed over the last year is we do in-person exit interviews now, especially with some of those hot job areas. So we are really trying to actively share that feedback. We actually go to the clinic managers' meetings quarterly, for example, now to share exit interview feedback, onboarding feedback. So at least we're, we're talking about those things, that'd be more than we have in the past.
Is it, would you say it's more like childcare or more like?
You know, we do have some graphs, I could, I can kind of, I could share more about that in my next quarter report perhaps. The thing about exit interviews is you do have to have kind of enough data over periods of time to really kind of look at the data collectively. So we break to our department, especially for confidence, child, that gets a little hard too. You only have one person waiting in a department and you share feedback is hard. So we try to be sensitive with that, but it is, it is a variety of things. I think work-life balance, relocation, you know, sometimes too.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share a little bit more about maybe some.
I mean, it's the cost of board, everybody, every field, this is going along, you know, people are rotating around.
I mean, the, the other thing is, is just a competitive recruitment market. So we have lost some folks even on our admission teams that figure where it was from. From, you know, organizations are aggressive with their recruiting tactics. So I think it's people that I have heard so much in the past, you know, year that, gosh, I was not hoping to leave KDH for this opportunity, we just landed because there's so many opportunities out there now. I will also say with remote work, we have, we have that too. And with remote work, that can be more popular in some industries and not, not.
Means more time.
But, you know, I think people, people are just looking for different things. So it, it is all over the board, but it's, it's not happening in conversations. So losing one person is too many, I think, sometimes.
So yeah. The thing about childcare that I've noticed and Amanda does review with me all of her exit interviews, but childcare is also showing up in why people don't accept jobs. It's, I'd love to do that, but I, there's, I just can't find anything here that I can't find childcare right now. So it's, it is a factor in people leaving, but it's also, you know, go to, or aren't able to accept positions they like.
Other questions for Julie or Amanda? All right. Thank you. Next up, operations, starting with.
All right.
All right. My report's on page 34. I don't have anything to add that I'm aware of, other than Julie mentioned of we're trying to firm up some dates for WSMA negotiations. Apparently, they've been struggling with an attorney on their side. So they're kind of short-staffed as well, which is why we're kind of waiting for dates. Otherwise, we just kind of business as usual. We've been made, I've been consistently busy. I think this week, we're taking a little, little, giving MedSurg a little break, but it's not, it's not anything consistent. It's still a little labile. Staffing remains the biggest issue in every department. We're still using, we've got 14 travel RNs that we're using on a long-term contract. So we haven't been able to hire. For most of our RNs, it seems they don't want full-time. So some of the part-time opportunities are taken. And there's also staff, consistent staff that we've heard of over the last month who would like to drop from full-time to part-time. So we're doing some innovative type of scheduling to keep these people. Any questions?
Questions for?
Was the cafe phase two completed on time? You have it 9:16, so I assume you wrote this out a while.
Yeah, I don't think so, right? I think we're backed up a little for equipment, right? The equipment, is that what we're waiting on?
No, I think we got his equipment.
Okay.
And the serving area is open, and so now they're finishing up. Second sign. The booth's back and everything. We got, I'm sure it was out today, got that all signed on. Tomorrow, they have their final one record call.
Any other questions for me? Thank you very much. Next up, we have the chief, Ms. Larry Offs.
Thanks. I'm headed towards some page 35, just below pickies. Since I have written this, we did find out this morning. We got our Ursa audit results. So we were pretty excited about that because our audit was staffed on May 2nd and 3rd. So quite a while waiting for those results. We had two findings and three opportunities for improvement. So for those two findings, we'll have to do a corrective action plan and get that turned into them within 60 days. And hopefully, they will approve that. And I'm really proud of the team that worked on this. I think having two findings is just amazing, given we've had this program for many years and we've never been honest with it. That was really kudos to them. Any questions?
Lab staffing is challenging.
It is, and I think that's an area where we've been having a lot of people move out of Ellensburg and to other locations. And it's been really a high turnover area, blabbering in particular. I know Katie worked in the lab today drawing blood. It's been pretty short.
But it also looks like on the legislative side that some external clients may be reaching out to us to use some of our labs. Because that was one of the things we envisioned when we expanded and did.
Yeah.
So potentially, are there some leads for outside business?
Yeah, there is some, some leads for that. Hopefully, we'll be able to maintain our staffing to provide good service.
Other questions for? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, Stacey.
Stacey Leia is sitting today. So yeah, I'll answer some questions.
Do we, you have, yeah, her report here. Does anyone have any questions about her report that Julie might be able to answer?
I would just mention that I believe we're on track to add dermatology. When we go to the, over the math by October. And then that also, with the telephone situation in the clinics, we learned that they have, we have some technical issues with the boss that we're trying to resolve with, which was the. I'm sorry. And we have not been, that is also some escalated up for someone else in the coordination to help figure out how the queues are working. You know, how many people are going to voicemail, all of which seems very confusing. So we are waiting to see what's being escalated up there probably changing.
Okay, any, anything about Stacey's report? Thank you. Next up, medical staff, Dr. O'Brien.
Yeah, just here, the, page 39. 39, you have the list of privileges, credentials. If we're all seeing on virtual. Any questions?
Administrative assistant for the medical staff is doing a decent job keeping some. So that's.
Yes, she's writing.
She's, she's, she's making. But I, I appreciate, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's electronic system. I know we said this before, but it's working really well, I think. And it does make it really easy to review these. I assume everybody's put in their, their notes or their approval at the other stage, at the electronic step here.
I'd like to, Shannon put in kind of her summary notes that, you know, any things we want to go and dig deep, bring here or whatever. We can see that real quick.
Yeah, it's good to call our attention to that, so.
The minutes are going to have four paragraphs on how spectacular you sound. Not really.
So, so anyway, if there are no questions or comments about these credentialing recommendations, then do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the list as presented.
I'll second it. Okay, motion by John, second by Terry. All those, any, if there's no other questions about it, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Eric.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you. And then you guys have been working on, these are changes to the bylaws, right?
No, not the bylaws.
Oh, yeah.
These are what we call criteria for application.
Ah, okay.
Policy.
Yeah, policy, not bylaws. I remember that discussion.
Yeah. And basically, when we switch to the electronic application, because we did not include criteria for application for initial appointment. So we just reviewed that and updated that for all the different specialties. And that's what you have. Most of them are just updating qualifications for board certification to be accomplished within five years, which is nationally the original standard. Dr. Lindsay just updated the emergency department, which to some extent, nothing here.
I remember we talked about this at M E C. We've had a lot of conversations over many years about more eligibility, qualification, and stuff like that. So you guys are sort of standardizing this?
Yeah, yeah, we're expecting in the future that people will be board certified. Usually, we've sort of had that general policy all along. However, as people get near the end of their careers, it becomes far more onerous than helpful to maintain or re, renew board certifications. So that's fairly common for us. But basically, we're just saying that they have to achieve their board certification.
It's nice to have, have, have a standard practice, at least.
Yeah.
So these are things, since these are policies, as opposed to bylaws. Because bylaws do not require approval, right? Anyone?
Yes, bylaws do too, yeah.
All right, well, anyway, these are policies, so I assume the board has to approve these.
Yes, and because they have to do with credentialing and the board oversees all the project that goes on in the facility, then we do need a motion for all of the criteria. But then also, just page 40.
Yeah.
That is, that's separate issue. That's the delineation of privileges for the tele radiology. We are adding the advanced privilege for the screening of the mammography reads.
Okay. Should we separate that vote from the changes to the criteria?
Please.
Okay. So our first vote will be on the delineation of privileges regarding tele radiology. Hopefully, you guys have seen that the change there is to the mammography screen.
And I just got, reinformation, this is just for screening mammography. It's not for diagnostic mammography. We researched this, and this is a common thing of tele radiology to do.
So hopefully, you guys have seen that change to delineate the privileges. If that sounds good to you, and they have, you know, talked about this in M E C, this, you know, and this issue, obviously, you know, for the big person, on this being.
Yeah, we researched.
Yeah. So there are no other questions regarding this, just a specific one on the donation of privileges for tele radiology? Then I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the delineation of, I can't pronounce it, delineation.
Deline.
Yeah. Of privileges.
Okay, motion by Terry. Second by Bob. Okay, there are no further questions. All those in favor, the change to delineation of privileges, please say aye.
Aye.
And Erica's on board too.
Yeah.
Erica thumbs up. Okay, and then, Shannon, as far as, we can then put all these criteria then together in one vote, I think, from all, or should we do them separately?
Mandy had separated them on the agenda.
Okay.
But I think we had talked about.
Yeah.
Items 3 through 15.
Yeah.
Okay. So hopefully, you guys have had a chance to review these prior to the meeting, but they're here for us. Anyway, the criteria for dentistry and orthodontics, emergency department, family medicine, dental surgery, ophthalmology, little laryn, laryngology, laryngology. Air notes, throat, pathology, pediatric, psychiatry, radiology, neurology, obstetrics, and gynecology. So these are before us, these changes to the criteria for applying privileges, these different areas. Any other questions or anything for Dr. O'Brien, for these?
I, I read through these and reviewed them all, and I didn't see any issues that I could come up with. That's a small changes that we did to these drafts. I felt that they were, they were moving into the future the way we should be moving into.
You support all these changes?
Yes.
And M E C has approved these changes to be brought to the board for our approval. So it's, not only Dr. O'Brien, but M E C as a whole is supporting this.
So I would move to approve collectively these changes as described and presented.
Move by John, second by Bob. There's no further, there's no further discussion. All those in favor of ending with criteria for privileges, please say aye.
Aye.
And another thumbs up for Erica, yeah? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien, anything else? Okay. Next up, we have Dr. Martin's reports. Dr. Martin's not here, obviously.
I would just add a couple things after the conversation with him. Scott's going to talk a little delineated items that was added to the agenda for discussion about 501(c)(3) status, which the district has never needed before. One of our strategies for filling some of our provider holes is to recruit foreign-trained providers, which is a very difficult process. But in order to do that, in addition to being a public hospital district, we have to be 501(c)(3). So that's why that question's coming before you. We do have a candidate that we're very, very interested in, in Canada. So we're trying to expedite this. Scott is working to make sure there are no unintended consequences of it, but that's the reason for the ask there.
You don't worry about language barrier?
No. Be with Scott or?
No, with the Canadian.
So the other thing that we're trying to do is internal medicine, in particular, that sort of provider is getting scarcer and scarcer. A lot of people who are going to internal medicine continue long to sub-specialize in cardiology or other things. So just a internist who sees patients in the clinic is getting very scarce. So we've opened up those positions to family medicine docs who specialize in geriatrics. So we're looking for some family medicine folks who don't want to see babies or have families, but would really focus their attention on the older population to see if we can help shore up this happening.
Any questions about, it's, it's good to know about the, how improvement is affected by the 501. Are there any questions about Dr. Martin's report that Julie might be willing to?
I have a question about program development to mid, over mid-page. We continue to look for partners in psychiatry and nephrology. What does that mean to look for partners versus somebody that's actually come and be part of it full-time?
So like in your case of nephrology, we reached out a number of times to, here in our community, we have DEITA, which serves folks who are regularly receiving dialysis. We have to transfer patients who are on regular dialysis recipients if they need an acute care hospital stay. So they come in very sick with something else. But if they're going to need to be dialyzed over what we anticipate their stay to be, we have to be able to provide that service, and those patients are getting shit. So we've tried to work with DEITA. There are some other services out there to have that service brought into the hospital. So that's, we don't want to go into the dialysis business, but it's someone who could come in and serve our inpatients. And we've already started some conversations about how we would outfit. That's not a terribly willing partner, but we may have a foot in the door. It's hard to figure out who to talk to there to get anything done. The psychiatry, this need is just so great. In order to meet our needs in the emergency department or anywhere else, we will need to partner with the tele psychiatry department or something like that. So that's, getting a psychiatrists will, you know, barely make it in the needs. So we're looking at a service.
Under that same thing, it talked about the monkeypox and how there was 12,000, roughly 12,500 immunizations given in the state of Washington. Do you, does he have any idea, or do you have any idea whether we're going to start offering monkeypox in Kiddatask County?
Yes. Well, I'll go through public health. And yes, they think there are some populations in our county that would be eligible for it. So that, but mostly, that's looking at very specific folks and populations. And so it'd go through the health department. It wouldn't be like, I want a monkeypox vaccine, then I get one. Does that make sense?
All right, some populations are more at risk.
Yes. And, and there's a limited supply of vaccine. So the state of Washington is focusing specifically on those high-risk populations. So they're getting it to those folks going through health departments.
And, and I know he had talked about this before, that, and they've also talked that people that have had smallpox vaccine when they were younger, that they, they, if that is supposed to help them prevent getting monkeypox, that they've had the vaccine already together. So that. that they've had the vaccine already together, so that us older individuals that may have had that when they were younger would probably need a monkeypox vaccine.
I don't know much about that, but I've heard that also, but I haven't heard any more discussion about it. Just that they're really focusing on people that have been exposed or who are at risk.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for the overview.
Okay. Moving on to CFO Scott Holender. You wanna do operations first, and then the 501(c)(3). Yeah, let's, that's all right, let's do it that way. Let's go over the operations report first, and then we'll talk about the 501(c)(3).
Okay. Yeah. If we, my report starts on page fifty-six, but let's turn to fifty-eight, which is the statistics, and it supports what you've heard from Vicky and Rhonda, and then Stacy and their reports. We have continued to be busy. You can see what, on line one, admissions well ahead of the monthly budget, and also year-to-date budget. Patient days, the same story. Line seven, deliveries well ahead of budget, and once, you know, the, just for deliveries counted as an admission and patient base, and so to the degree that we're doing more deliveries, it increases the number of patient days and admissions to hospital, so obviously. And then case mix was higher than we had expected and seen historically. Surgery was busy once again. ER and urgent care continue to be very, very busy. Lab wasn't quite as busy in the month, but diagnostic imaging, the, there was a restriction on, there was limits to the amount of contrast media that was available for some of the high-end CTs and MRIs. And the, there's more of that contrast media available, so we have not, we've been doing those scans with contrast, and it was reflected in the stats for the month. Down on clinic visits, twenty-five through twenty-eight, in excess of budget, but all in all, these are very positive statistics that lead to a very good revenue number for the month. Turning over to page.
Are you, I'm sorry, can you say something about the rehab business?
Rehab? Oh, that isn't, that's an error.
Okay.
On, we're below budget in student staffing, but I'm sorry, that, I was gonna get the right number on that, I did not.
That's all right.
They are, they are below budget for the month, and it's, and it's, Rodney might say it, it's just staffing.
I know in Cleveland, we've got two, or one provider out on, turn it and leave. There's only two providers up there, so that cuts them in half. And then they're short in PT significantly, they're in Alex as well.
So we are, so we're?
It's not ninety percent.
We're under, but not that much.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page sixty-one, you can see the, the results of those positive statistics on inpatient. A positive variance of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand outpatient below budget on, it was mainly lab and surgery outpatient. There was actually, inpatient surgeries were well in excess of budgets, so you had a shift from what had been outpatient surgeries up to inpatient. Professional fees, I have a budget, so overall revenue, this is at eighteen point six million dollars, was a very busy month, a lot of working days, twenty-three working days for the month. Contractuals were under budget, and most of the other deductions were. One thing related to, you would comment about Shannon's assistant, and we have, we had some administrative adjustments, you know, a large, about seventy thousand dollars related to providing non-credential. I dug into that, and it was well before, it was for the prior year, when we had delegated credentials to the collaborative, and we also had a contractor doing that, and so I feel really good about what we have in medical staff services as far as getting providers' credential timely, we're in a good spot. And there's still, Tara tells me that there's still some junk in the AR related to older stuff prior to that, that there's, we're... We're in a good spot now. As Vicky had noted, on the expenses, she's using a lot of travelers, as we're using them in the hospital, in the home health and hospice, and that temporary labor number is, reflects the use of traveling, traveling staff. And how many total travelers do we have, Vicky said fourteen?
I, just in my department, yeah, so around fourteen.
There's also younger travelers in the funding.
But there's some in clinics and energy.
And then there's lab. I have four in home health.
And how many providers are?
Which place now?
ENT.
I have ENT and internal medicine.
Peds, Peds too?
Yeah, we have, we have four totals. We have two ENTs, one Peds, and internal medicine. We don't have the one that work.
Down on purchase services, a lot of the work, maintenance work that Ron has been doing in family birthplace, the exterior of the hospital, heating, and a new maintenance project in diagnostic imaging, pain and flooring is a period of service there, and so that's the reason for that variance. All in all, even with, we have good revenue, expenses were high, we still were able to post an operating income of six hundred and fifty-six thousand for the month, and five one million for the year, and then we had some unrealized losses in investments that caused the three hundred and forty thousand dollar loss in not operating. Anyway, based on what I read in the paper about other organizations, I'm grateful to be able to support these.
Our expenses were, were under budget for benefits, it's one of the reasons why we haven't got our budget for benefits.
We had, this month, we had a, it relates to workers' comp, and we get, we're part of the workers' comp, workers' comp pool with the hospital association, and we received a rebate back for that, it's something because of the utilization, and lower utilization than the monthly expense, or the annual. And so we got a nice credit, it was over eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Our, our medical benefits overall are coming in lower than we expected as well. And then we did budget for some of these enhanced employee benefits that were, have just started in September.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Anyway, good, a good financials that you'll see back over on tablet page sixty. You see the days in AR came down just a little bit. Our past position continues to be good, strong, payer mix is good, and we're, I'm grateful to be KDH right now, given what I read in the paper. Questions related to anything?
This is maybe a basic question, but just so I know, in the operating income, I know how that would fluctuate, I can understand that, because there's all sorts of explain it, but why does the budget fluctuate so much? Is, month to month, is that because of?
Well, the budget fluctuates, some of it's based on the working days in the month. And so there, for instance, in August, there were twenty-three working days, and so, you know, there are few, you always have weekends, but the staffing on weekends is less, but the staffing during, on a working, on a regular workday is greater, so we have more staff, we also have more, more revenue associated with. So, you know, in July, for instance, we had, we had the Fourth of July, we had, you know, normal weekends, we had the Fourth of July on Mondays, that takes, you know, you're paying down what people take PPO, but when the people that are working, you're paying a little bit more in, you know, time and a half. So it does, Jason, anything else you'd like to say about budget?
No, just kind of high level, the revenue, overall, I pretty much do the revenue based on either business days in the month for the clinics, or operating days, the total, total days in the month for hospital revenue. And then the expenses are pretty flat, except for things that have a clear trend, like utilities, and some of the purchase services, like snow removal. Other than that, I do, I do expense pretty flat.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions about the operations reports from Scott?
Do we know when we'll have a number from this PEP for that liability that we need to book?
But Jason has reached out to the PEP, and I don't think you, I saw the email, I don't think we've heard back from him, have we?
Was that for the liability?
Yes.
No, I've been working with Millman, and I got an email from them today, I have not opened that email yet, I don't know what it says. So, soon, I emailed them last week and said I'd like it by the end of the month.
The other item that I have on page sixty-four is KDH has some, the credit cards that, and we have a, we have right now at the bank, they're issued through Castor Valley Bank, and we have a company limit of eighty thousand dollars. And we are bumping up against that limit, particularly, we'd like to have, we'd like to have a few individuals have a higher credit limit, particularly Michelle World, she's, she's had to, she's drowning, she's incurred quite a few expenses back in DC getting this marketing opportunity that she has back there, and so she's actually exceeded her, her limit. So we'd like to bump her up and get Shannon a card, a lot of the credentialing work and enrollment work that she does with providers on a regular basis, they take a, they require, you know, a card payment, and what kind of payment they're... And so this, we'd like to increase the overall total card limit for the organization from eighty thousand dollars to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we, then gives us the potential to increase the cards for some individuals as needed, and also to potentially issue cards to other individuals that may need them. And I don't need action on this, but I, the bank asked me to bring this to board's attention, and if there is no objection to that, we will proceed.
So who tracks that, is it? David?
Oh, county.
Yeah, just the one person that tracked?
It's, for payments and stuff like that, it is Deborah Connors, you know, council pay for it.
Yeah.
That was a relationship with the bank, so Kelly, Kelly did it.
The new fence in the backyard.
Oh.
Someone is tracking that.
The, the, all of the carding, not that I don't trust, you know, our staff, but. The, all the charges used on the card have to be supported by invoices, and...
Okay, so we bring back it.
They bring back invoices, everybody.
What does the... Does Erica have a card because she's?
She does.
Chair of the board? Or is it some other reason?
We better one, because we love her.
So what's that all about?
It's available to board chair, if they, and actually any other.
Those two guys get questions. I mean, like, you aren't talking about building fences, but.
I think that if there's a desire for a card, it's off the Jewels, and we can make it happen.
I would say it's Scott.
That's why we don't have.
Oh, I appreciate it.
So if, if there's no objection, we will proceed to work with the bank, and that the bank has authorized us to take, to move that way.
Are there any concerns in terms of board members? Nope, none at all.
Thank you. And then Mitchell's report is on sixty-five, or sixty-six. You can't have four million dollars once every month, and so just, we ask.
Flacker.
But he's, he's investing opportunities, and we think that there will be some opportunities in the future. We actually, this is unrelated to District One, but we finally got all of the legislative money for District Two, for the ambulance station that came in at the end of the month. And, and so we, as you recall, we have the lab renovation, or the lab expansion, we received, it was almost four hundred thousand dollar legislative grant, so we've, we will be getting those funds shortly to offset some of the, the costs related to the lab. And then we do have a commerce grant related to the energy efficiency work that Ron is doing, and so there's this, this grant work that Mitchell is doing with collaboration from individuals, the KCHN Foundation, District One, District Two, there's a lot of opportunity, and he's taking advantage of those opportunities.
We can say this just about every month, we see this, but Mitchell's salary seems to be a pretty good investment.
Now, Mitchell moved over to the medical arts and I, and I really miss him, he was always out, you know, asking what projects were, and what we needed funding for, so him living for the medical arts, and I feel like we've lost that connection.
We, to help keep that connection, though, we'd actually invite Mitchell to our... Just so he can stay in touch with everybody. He, he, he knows people now, and they know him, and, and they're aware of the opportunities, so people will have a problem reaching out, but they think there's a grant opportunity, and he is very thorough at investigating. We do have some capital that, two pieces of capital that we would like to board consider. One is for OR lights and booms for our existing OR rooms, and we went and looked on our property schedule to see if we could, because when we're looking to buy things, we want to retire the old, and they're just logged in with other fixed assets of some sort, so we can't identify them. But the lights that we have are as old as the surgery, existing surgery building right now. These lights that we're proposing to get would be consistent with the other, the new light that is gonna go into the expansions, the expanded room for surgery and the expansion project. And these, part of the reason for ordering these lights now is to lock in the pricing and to guarantee that they will be here when we need them, when we do the expansion project.
So will those lights meet the requirements that we get everywhere else in the hospital to help reduce?
They are a...
It will?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we didn't do the surgery suites, surgery, we did the upgrade, there were royals in the hospitals?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Well, just to put that in perspective, all of the, the whole hospital's LED lights came to a price of about six hundred thousand dollars. To get LED lights for the surgery is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We got that sales, that, one of the construction teams had somebody from this company, and they were looking at them coming, and these are incredible, it, I mean, it's all about how they can position them and move, I mean, it really is, it's not like a light that's mounted in the ceiling.
No, they have to...
With equipment and...
They have to be mobile, so that you've got them in the right area for the patient, and whatever part you're looking at.
It's kind of a light type.
Like digital lights, much bigger, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're jumping a couple generations, so that's one where you think they're...
Yeah.
And there's also the, the boom arms along with that, that's got the gas is, yeah, and power, you know.
Well, I think that we should upgrade them, because we shouldn't have surgery caves, we should have lights inside of them.
Can we identify the pizza place that will take our old lights?
Yeah. Related to old lights. I do this. We we had somebody in the Cleon Hospital when it existed. Someone kept the surgery lights and they were completely, they're beautiful. But they must be eighty years old and they have donated them back to they're in California right now. They're going to ship them up to us.
I'm going to send crazy.
We're, we're not going to put in surgeries one, two, three, four.
I know we'll find something crazy to do with a hundred year old light.
Yeah.
All right. So Terry, you sounded, you sounded supportive. Would you like to make a motion to approve this capital expenditure?
I move to approve the capital expenditure for the surgery services. So we don't have surgery cave. And then we have booms to lift things up.
All right. Motion by Terry?
I'll second.
Second from John. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the capital expenditure request for OR lights, please say aye.
Aye.
And the arches, so that's unanimous?
Thank you very much. The second capitalized we have on our list is for, this is a is for a new sign reader out front on Chestnut Avenue. And as Ron runs electricity out to that new sign reader, he will also run electricity out to the front parking lot area and it will be then capped, but they will be in preparation for some electronic, electric vehicle charging stations. This doesn't put charging stations in, but it has all the wiring that will be necessary for them to be installed at a later date. And, and then also this is to open a room from the med surge out into the courtyard, courtyard area. And so the grand total of all of this is two hundred eight thousand seven, seven hundred dollars to do this work. And this is some of the lands, it's not landscaping. This is just a piece of that landscaping project that Julie wanted to do that is, is is necessary. The signage is, it's a great way to call it services that we have here at K D H. And let people, let neighbors know what you're doing.
So could we get some federal funding if we're going to be putting in the charging station, car charging stations out there? I, I have read that there has been some funding put out around to increase the number of charging stations around the United States. Is that something that maybe we could get a grant for?
Yeah. And we already had, when we were advancing that project, we had Mitchell go out and hold for grants and there is money for that. So the actual charging stations themselves are on pause. This is just those lines where kicking power out to the front of the building where those will eventually be, we're going to take this opportunity to take down some power posts as well. Both of these, as Scott said, are components of the project that we decided in the study to just pause.
Okay. All right. So we won't be spending a lot of money putting the charging stations out there.
We just didn't want to have to dig twice in the same spot.
Right, right. How many charging stations are we going to pick? We have?
Oh, was it five or four or five?
Yeah.
We wanted to position them for patients, but also for employees. So they were going to be a part of the number of patients.
Okay. So this, uh, this is maybe just a question about process, like the, the sign and the electrical for the sign and the stuff. Now, all that's related, but the courtyard door seems to be unrelated. You know, are they just in one package because it's all from facilities? If that actually was in the campus project and that was just a piece that we felt we wanted to get done now. And so we, we grabbed it.
Will the same contractor be doing this?
Yes.
The best one.
I see. All right. Any other questions for, for honor for Scott about this? Okay, a motion to approve the capital expenditure request for the sign I'd like to call in the courtyard. John, thanks a lot for the motion to approve. Second by Bob. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we got Erica Wells, which unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now you guys all have this handout, right? You ready to move on, Scott?
Yes.
So everybody has a handout, I think, for Scott about the five oh one C three designation.
As Julie alluded to, this is, there is a very much like to hire and, and we are working with a immigration authority and it's, even though as a public district hospital, we are supposed to be a not-for-profit. Five oh one C three is you can be without being one. They, the box says you need to be a five oh one C three. So we, this, this document here was pros and cons that Tom Dingus with DCA split out. I have, I've been through, I think it's a ten twenty-three form, application form. And I looked at all of the boxes and the information that is required. I did, I don't see any concerns with that. I have, we've reached, I also reached out to Look at that Valley Hospital in, in Goldendale. They have been a dual organization. Five oh one C three and public district hospital, it's a dual since nineteen ninety-six. They haven't, it's, it really, it seems to have minimal risk and concern with the dual designation. And they, very recently did it was so they could attract foreign trained physicians into Goldendale. So these other public district hospitals have also made this step. So we would there's still some things that we would like to investigate. This actually just came about since we didn't even talk about it in the finance committee. It arose on Wednesday. But I think we will do our due diligence to turn over everything and understand fully pros and cons for doing it. But it's highly likely that we would like to take this step and become a dual five oh one C three and public district organization.
That's dual status. So this doesn't in any way affects public hospital districts as entity. It's just added on to it, to our injunction.
So for I've seen this, it's like here, like Yacke Memorial is a five oh one C three, not-for-profit organization. They're not a public hospital district. Back in the nineties, a number of hospital districts, and my recollection is it had to do with they wanted to do four oh one Ks or four oh three Bs. So you had a handful of the public hospital districts that had never before had five oh one C three status. Who went out and got that status? So it, what Scott, what Scott's working with Brad Berg and with A W P H D and Tom Dingus on is to make, just make sure there's no unintended consequence of us doing this. So we'll be some paperwork. Like things like nine nineties that you have to attach a community health needs assessments and community health improvement plans. We're already doing that. So we, we need to do a little bit more research, but this is a very deliberate strategy. Not only for recruiting physicians, but we're also looking at this for labs, ex nurses and, and other folks. So we would like to begin the process. This particular disaster that we have, we would like to get started in March or so. So we're going to try to expedite that.
So the, Erica had a question about whether this would be permanent? Or whether you could reverse it at any point? No?
It would be permanent.
Permanent. Okay. So the main motivating, what's motivating this and what's motivating it now is staffing?
Yes. Recruiting foreign-trained providers.
Because I see the, you know, the pros and cons, which I appreciate Scott, this format, right? Sort of talks about what the, it sounds like it's more work for your office.
A little bit. Actually, the, the Look at that, has never been, had to file a nine ninety and the, the nine nineties have fifty pages. Not-for-profit, that's a lot of detail. I, I did, we had to do it at Memorial. But they've never been required. The only thing that they have been subject to is the, the high level scrutiny on how they process the regulations and things like that. And they're also, we, these are, as I understand it, rules we're already following right now. And so it appears, it, it appears to be a good step that will actually further help the organization to attract it may also help Mitchell in some of his grant work. Sometimes the you know, he works with K C H N, which is a five oh one C three and foundation, which is a five oh one C three and K D H may be able to take advantage of some grant funds as a five oh one C three that we currently cannot as a public district hospital.
Particularly at the federal level, we're a really strange animal. And everybody knows what a five oh one C three is, but you have to go to Washington R C Ws to find out that we're quasi-government. And a lot of times that goes to being a county type hospital or state type hospital in people's minds. So we are Washington State's answer and on trial for public hospital district. This will make it more uniform. And like I said, I, I think everyone's familiar with what the five oh one C three is.
There, there may be other questions, but just to be clear. Is there, is the idea that this is purely informative and we will, I assume we have to take action at some point? Are we looking to, we don't have to take any actions aboard?
Are you anticipating asking them to?
I guess, do we, we need board permissions on that on this one?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think, I think.
Okay. And so, I'm sorry, Terry. So we won't have to take action on this at any point, or?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I mean, we'll, we'll check with Tom Dingus, but I, I don't believe so. And, and I apologize. This literally has come up in the last seventy-two hours and we need, we need to make some progress on it. So we'd like to, we could be active.
Okay. So all right.
And then you, you haven't seen any horrible issues that other hospitals that have become five oh ones C threes have had issues. It sounded like everything was just positive or just moderate. But it gave a positive impact for the organization. Is that correct? Okay. So it sounds like we should be a five oh one C three organization. And it'll also probably help us get a few more grants too.
It has that potential.
And then if we weren't looking for donations, that should help us some too.
It would help us with that, although we would probably encourage people that want to donate to direct, direct those donations to the foundation also.
Yeah. Cause the foundation is five oh one C three, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
We still be subject to paying would we still be subject to paying for any wage?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
All right. Well, I think it sounds very positive.
So you say that this just came up in the last seventy-two hours. So this is, I mean, I know I asked this question, but this is really just about staffing. And this is to tell us about the implications one way or the other, but the main motivation behind this is just that.
Having access to that oriental pool of families.
Are there any other questions about this? I mean, it's a plan that you guys are going to do and you're informing us that you're going to do this and seeing if we have any strong objections, but it's not something that you need to vote on. Do any people feel like there are any concerns they have moving forward with this?
I think it's great. It's a good idea. I think it also says something to the community that you are a not-for-profit. Some folks might, might not know that. The community with five oh one C three is not a profit.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. It makes sense.
Okay.
See, you got a half in. Thank you. And I don't have anything else. I thought it was probably enough.
Okay. Any last questions for Scott?
Nope.
Thank you for the good report. Thank you. And thanks for this, Josh. Okay. She all had to step out, but hopefully you guys have had a chance to look at a board report. There any, anything you guys would like to talk about that? That's in our report? Sounds like she's doing some good work in helping recruit. Okay. Hearing nothing, then move on to nothing on under education board reports. Erica, I thought it might be a good idea in her old business to talk briefly about the coffee with the commissioner. She sort of thought we might want to talk about maybe if there's another format or some other way to engage the employees. Maybe we want to have sort of dinner with employees that we would invite maybe, or have presentations at the dinner about what we do. Just thought it might be a good idea to, to kind of brainstorm a little bit about how we might use this. You know, maybe change the way we do it so that we can accomplish the aim of it, which is to connect with employees at that point. Do people have any thoughts on, on this?
Well, I know we have one set up for October. And so I thought I was going to use that as a litmus test coming out of COVID. Does anybody show up? And if they don't, then I would fully support those really role receives and brainstorm how to make sure people feel that they have access to us with minimum friction points and so forth. But if we get fifty people showing up to the commissioner, not the commissioner, you know, it's not at all. So that's kind of where I stand.
Have any thoughts? Okay. Well, we can do that. We can say, let's sort of wait and see. Between now and, and the next board meeting, maybe start to think about whether there might be a, a better way to, to connect with employees and to
And then I welcome ideas from the people that are here, you know, all the time.
In the past, they've had dinners with community members and have presentation.
Yeah, I remember doing that.
So we build a good, that. Yeah. Talk with commissioner. I, I like that. It's relaxed. It's to come and go. Less formal.
Yeah.
Could you both?
I did have some conversation about this and I also got some of Michelle's feedback too. And we thought, you know, we wanted to try some different locations, maybe to do some in different areas, maybe different times every day, especially when people buy a light. Kind of see how it is present day. And I also think people might have an impression that they have to have a concern to come and connect with you and share thoughts. And so it just may be some education on what the purpose is. Why might you join coffee and commissioners? So food always helps, but you know, we do have to be cautious of if people don't come, how, how extreme do we get? So those are some of the thoughts that Michelle and I had up for some of the talking with you, John, and I appreciate your feedback.
Okay. And I know Erica had some thoughts on this too. So Erica, maybe, you know, either, either after, either after or before, or before the next coffee with commissioner, maybe touch base with Amanda and it sounds like she might have some ideas for, for how to approach this. And obviously if anyone else has, has any thoughts, feel free to, as Erica's saying, feel free to shoot her an email and let her know. And this goes not only for board members, but anybody, anybody in the room here, if you have ideas. And really the, the point is, is not to sort of field complaints, as you said, but just to kind of break down the barrier so that between the board and on the ground employees. Okay. Under new business, word self-evaluation. One thing that Erica, Erica wanted me to pass along is she really thought that when we were replacing a member of the board who, after someone had, had resigned, we did a strengths and weaknesses assessment. I don't know if you remember that. I mean, Bob, I think you were here. I'm not sure. I think that's pretty instinctive. But the idea was we sort of saw what what our strength, you know, the stuff we thought we had a good grasp on and the stuff that we and the stuff that we thought we were lacking in personally, and then we sort of put it together and saw how the board looked and what our holes were. And she thought that that might be a good way to get started. And John, I know you talked about having a more kind of informal conversation. That might be a way to kind of frame a conversation like that. We could sort of see where we needed to do maybe some personal or some professional development to fill some of those gaps. How do people feel about that sort of process where we might do a strengths and weaknesses assessment of the board? And then use that as a basis for a kind of sit-down conversation about, about board?
I think that's a good idea, because, you know, I've been doing a lot of, of the learning from the Washington State Hospital Association. And I, I think that there is a lot of those things that could be discussed that help us as a board to be a little more developed.
And John, that doesn't, is that, do you think that works well with what you're suggesting about having a sort of conversation, sitting around a table and having a conversation? Is that?
Well, I think it's better to try to break things down to like one through five.
Yeah.
It just doesn't have any nuance. So for me, and also I'd be curious to see if we think, you know, feedback from senior leadership on what they see as our strengths and weaknesses, if we pull information out of that to work on things, professional development, to strengthen up the areas with people that we're trying to work with to help the organization as a whole. So I'm, I'm over, I, again, I'm just not big on those, you know.
Yeah.
Part one through five and, you know, being a control maker that way.
No, no, it makes all kinds of sense. You want to get data that's useful, right? Erica seemed to think that, that the strength and weaknesses assessment is sort of what personally you're comfortable with, and then you sort of put them all together and you see, well, this person has a strength in economic issues, this person has a strength in, you know, in personnel or workplace workforce issues. And then you sort of see, well, what are we missing? And what, then do we need to send Terry out to go and do some more wishit training? But, you know, that sort of thing. So Shannon, if you wouldn't mind passing on to Mandy to try to locate that sort of strength and weaknesses assessment that we did. I guess I'll put the question to the people in this room about getting feedback from senior leadership team to the board. Do you feel comfortable doing that? I guess is what I ask, because.
Why do you too enthusiastic?
It's. Is this, is this something that you think you would like to do, you would be willing to do? It would obviously be anonymous, and we could have, you know, Amanda or, you know, Mandy. We sort of collect this stuff and, and collect it anonymously, and it would be passed on to us without names attached.
If you feel like it would be helpful, we'd be happy to. And we're good at debriefing and getting feedback.
You know where it feels like it would be helpful for me is sometimes the assignment to committees feels kind of random. And if we align what we see as the strengths with the need for board members on operational committees and board committees, whether it's quality or finance or, that might also inform sort of that distribution of board members.
Okay. I would just say from a finance perspective, I don't think it was random assignment. I've got two reasons.
He said like that, isn't he sort of?
I like columns and spreadsheets, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I think, I would love to get feedback from SLT.
Yeah, it sounds like Erica has a favor of feedback.
Yeah, she said I value SLT feedback.
Substance and specific that might be a little bit unhelpful, I think.
And it might be anonymous, but I don't think it's going to be that hard to pick out some other.
I meant, you know, I meant anonymous so that they could call us out by name.
No, you're wrong.
I mean, it is, oftentimes these board self-evaluations and feedback senior leadership is done at the boards that are appointed, right? So it is a little bit of a weird situation, because, you know, I mean, we can try to improve ourselves, but there's no say from the SLT, except as voters, about who's on the board, right? So it's a little unusual, but I think it would be a good, a good thing to get.
Well, I think that having the, the feedback from the senior leadership is also very educational for them too, because we are supportive at overseeing the organization. We don't have our hands in the center of operation. And, but we can be very supportive of things in the operation. So I think that having this discussion, the feedback from them, and if something comes up, we can have a discussion with them and say, okay, this is very important, but this, this is actually going through Julie and us supporting Julie, because this is not something that the boards can put their hands on directly. They have to be, put their hands on through Julie. So I think that having that feedback from the senior leadership will make sure that all the senior leadership understands at what level the board's at and what level they're at.
So, and I know you, you do a lot of work with, with the, you know, evaluation of senior leadership team, things like that. I mean, this is a governance body, so I don't want to load anything onto you. I mean, I can't anyway, I'm not your boss. But is this the sort of thing that we should, we should task Erica with, with coming up with a, with an instrument? Or is this, how hard would it be, given your background, to do something like this? I, I'm just not sure sort of where we go to actually get this done.
It would, it would not be hard. I would be happy to help with any resources or tools. And I just appreciate you thinking of that and all of you for wanting our feedback. I think that's really cool, so.
I'll include that in your feedback. So would you mind, Erica, if you, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to Amanda just to get her assistance without trying to load too much, too much onto her? But just to try to get some assistance for formulating this kind of survey? And then we can, on the board, we can review that before it goes out to make sure that everything is on there that we want. Obviously, we don't want it to be extensive, you know, you guys are busy enough, but we want to make sure it gets.
We want some hard questions, like. Something we can actually work on to be a better.
So you may not know however, that you, that will drive your timeline, because, you know.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Amanda's going to be going out maternity leave.
Oh.
A little girl again, so. And she's not going to let us name this one either. That won't be till March, so.
So Matt, what would be the timeframe for trying to work through this process? Any sense of that?
I mean, I think giving Erica and Amanda, do you think a month to come up with a draft for us to look at?
Yeah, you know, it makes sense. This is about the time of year where we, where evaluations happen in our organization with our leadership, and we do the CEO evaluation. So I would think about that, you know, what format would be helpful, you know? I know the CEO evaluation, like the debrief and summary kind of helps debrief some of the answers, so we want something like that or want to look at the results first. So we can, I, I'd have to have some conversations, but I think that, I think by the end of the year it would not be unreasonable, or maybe shortly after.
Okay, so maybe in a month, come up with a draft that we can review and, and sort of tinker with, and then once we finalize it, get it to everybody, give them, you know, wants to answer, then we, we get back. Does that sound good to you, John?
Yeah. Again, I just don't want to burden senior leadership with asking too much. And that's what I guess we're viewing the, that's what I want. All the useful information we can get without adding to their workload anymore than absolutely necessary.
Like I said.
That might be one of the questions, I think, because this survey burdened you too much.
Okay.
We can talk about it at SLT in our next meeting too, and kind of get some ideas together on our end of what we.
Maybe they do a group consensus around the lunch individual, you know, and it has some teaming, you guys in group, because certain things are going to ride to the surface and.
And then we could summarize it, and that way if one person maybe doesn't think of something a certain way, yeah, it's great.
We could put pictures of all of us up and give you darts and see which one has the most holes. That's it, that's the all these.
This was like a shock.
I'll have a red shirt on, so that way I'll be the center of the dart.
Okay. So, and so Erica and Amanda will be in touch to try to brainstorm about what a draft might look like, and then we'll review it before anything goes out. And if you guys think that a less formal sort of conversation with that kind of summary is better, that's fine. But anyway, thank you guys for doing that, and thank you, Matt. And just one reminder that we do have that meeting next, next Wednesday, hospital district two, two to six up in Cleelan.
It starts at two o'clock.
Starts at two o'clock.
And where, where's the location?
At the new ambulance station, so.
I'll give the address for some.
Yeah, it's, have you been to the Cleelan clinic? Oh, okay, all right.
Would you please pass along to Mandy, we just to send us a reminder, maybe on Tuesday, with, you know, a map or directions or something. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah. But it's, it's on that road, it's same place on.
Okay, so that's it for the, if there's anything else for the good of the order before we go to executive session? All right, Julie, how long do you think we need for executive session?
How about 40 minutes?
All right, let's take a, a break until 7:15 and then reconvene at eight in the public section. Sound all right? Okay. Then this part of the meeting is, is ended and see you back at 8:00.